This conference will now be recorded.
Tonight is November 5th, our 5 o'clock Board and Trustees regular meeting. Dave, if you could do the roll call, please.
Yes, Chris Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Genoway.
Here.
Mr. Schmoll.
Here. Simcoe here. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the greater public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, were there any questions on the 21st regular meeting minutes? So, make the motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Genoway.
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't present.
Oh, that's right, yes.
Yeah.
And Mr. Schmoll.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, and then additions or deletions, we are going to be deleting the executive session at the end of the meeting for collective bargaining. And we don't have anybody signed in for hearing of the public, but we, it looks like we've got some folks for non-agenda items, and we'll get to that in just a second. Luckily for you, you've got a really light menu tonight, so we'll adjust your concerns here real soon, so. Dave, you want to fire away on this?
Yes, yes, we have three resolutions. First, 25-1-178, and it's a transfer within the general fund and gasoline funds for household pickup and tree removal services.
Any questions on that, guys? I'll offer resolution 25-178, transfer appropriations.
Second.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Genoway.
Yes.
Mr. Schmoll.
Yes. Second, next resolution is 25-179, and it's return of an advance into advance regarding bulletproof vest grants.
Any questions on that? I'll offer resolution 25-179, advance of funds.
Second.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Genoway.
Yes.
Mr. Schmoll.
Yes. And lastly, resolution 25-180, to create a new expense, to create new expense line items for non-OPC, WSC line item, and road building supplies, and a new 2026 OPEC project.
Questions? Call up a resolution 25-180, to establish a new expense accounts for the 2026 budget.
One second.
Ms. Johnson. Jill.
Yes.
Mr. Genoway.
Yes.
Mr. Schmoll.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, we've got someone, Cheryl, forgive me if I say this wrong, Beth, or Beth?
Correct.
Hi Cheryl.
Hi, how are you?
Great, if you don't mind, just for the tape, if you could just introduce yourself, thanks for coming tonight, and your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Cheryl Bass, and I live in the 4408 Nantucket Drive, in the middle aisle of 26th. And what I'm here tonight is to address the sheets moving into Monroe Street in Nantucket, and the impact that will have on our community. I understand from a meeting that I went to last week, at the library, the Sanger Library, the gentleman that was there did a really nice job of talking about the pro, the pros about sheets people being into Toledo, the job offers that they could offer, that's a family-friendly business, they can provide good benefits, good wage. They talked about how they always have three people in the facility at all times, they got security cameras, they take care of their property, they'd like to do landscaping, it all sounds really nice, but the issue is, is that the size of the development, and the fact that if they're going to put gas tanks in your neighborhood, we're not really happy about that. They also, I don't know, they want to put in eight day homes, so that's quite a few, that's like 16, and that will increase numbers of traffic that are going through there, already at this intersection, if you ever turn by, Nantucket on Monroe Street, it's very, very busy, and we are a thoroughfare on Nantucket because we are cut through, and it's just going to increase the traffic even more. But even on top of that, it's going to have a restaurant that seats 30, and they're going to have a drive-through, and I presume that the type of people that come in there are going to be quick, they're going to come in and get some gas, maybe get a couple little things of food or the treat order, and come in, get the gas, and then go to the drive-through and get the food. So that's just telling you that the type of traffic that's going to happen is going to be increased from what we already have. What we have on the corner currently is we have restaurants, and we have the nut and the eyeglass, and I think we got a financial place at the corner, that used as a restaurant home here in the city of Toledo. But those people, when they come in, they will come in for about an hour and a half, and they would enjoy their meal, and the traffic decrease, you know, was there, but it's not going to be the type of traffic that we have. We did, we did get some information, I have it on my phone and I can share it with you, but the information that we got was a study that Sheets or somebody had done, that we got through the phone. I don't know the source, I don't believe that from, but they didn't want to disclose the source. But their study showed that they were looking to have 2,400 people coming through, and that would increase Nantucket, the people coming through about 1,500, under possibly. And that is very concerning because we don't have that many cars coming out of the street, and the impact that's going to have. They do have a little bit of history about Nantucket, and Nantucket was built in the late 60s. It was a show's home that came in and developed it, and before it was finished being completed, it was a dead-end street, and then when Dunbar came in and bought the property, and they built apartments, built the shopping center, where a lot of the lobbies sits down, they opened up the street, and the street's been open ever since. And that was sometime in the 70s, so. When we first started, I lived in that house, and been associated with that house since 1978, and we only had like two stop signs. And as we progressed throughout the city, and the city has progressed around us, we've had to, currently now we have five stop signs, and we have two speed bumps. And it's not doing its job, it's just increasing, when people do do construction out of Monroe Townes, Whiteford, whatever, and you're looking down on Nantucket, and the traffic is increasing during those periods. So we're really against them coming to Nantucket, not to the city of Toledo, I want to make that perfectly clear. We don't want, we don't want jobs, we want people here, but what I'm looking for, I guess, to you guys is, is that Savannah Township, the way it's presented, is that Lucas County is on the other side, and you guys are responsible for when you enter the township, where the first speed bump is, for the rest of it. We had a traffic light that was put in back in 1988, and that increased traffic for it because the people were able to see that it would come and go. The traffic light was needed in the sense, because the traffic was so bad there, coming out of the shopping mall, so we understood that. They did try to put the traffic light at the Savannah and Nantucket, and I want to say, I don't know if it was 1999, but that was decided, that it wasn't a good decision, so we were very happy about that as a community. I do want to say that I'm conscious specifically about Nantucket right now, but it has changed the whole traffic pattern on Towneage, Savannah, Monroe Street, has affected the whole neighborhood. When we would walk, when we walk about, we had more stop signs than we ever had. Maybe you have a yield sign, whatever, but we've had many, many, like on Homerdale and on Merryweather, there are stop signs in there now that were never there before. So traffic has increased over the years, and it probably will continue to increase if we do not address Nantucket as a thoroughfare going through our neighborhood. I also want to address that we don't have sidewalks, if you've never been there, and I want to also address that in the last five years, our community is changing, I've been there all these years, and I want to explain my situation. I have not, I have not had any kids, but I'm, you know, on my way out of that neighborhood, I'm just retired. I don't know how much longer I will live there, but I'm passionate for my community, and I'm passionate for the kids that I see on the street trying to write the bikes, trying to help the dogs, helping families, and I think it would be a tragedy for you guys not to address it, and to try to figure out how we can do it. I will tell you personally, I'm not a fan of putting more stop signs, I'm not a fan of putting more speed bumps. We have $300,000 homes, and you're already telling us by putting speed bumps that we got a traffic problem. We've lived with it, and we're kind of tired of it. The community is also, since I've been out walking, maybe you meet the more neighbors who I've never met before, there are several neighbors who have tried to do things, I mean, both of them were the adult bookstore community, they tried to prevent that from coming in, they had concerns about being so close to the school, but they were able to push their way and do what they needed to do to get that bookstore. There was another.
Hey Cheryl, you don't want no offense, and I feel terrible for interrupting you. If there's anybody else that'd like to speak, I should have been very clear upfront, and I apologize, and I apologize, and I'll give you as much rope as you can, but typically, we try to keep it at three minutes. Keep going where you're going, I should have said it before. Okay, I apologize for interrupting.
But I want to give you some history, so I think it's vital that you know, and I also want you to know where the meeting's at, because you guys are supposed to be representing. They tried to stop housing that went in, and it was 59 units that are on the court, they didn't want that, they didn't want that, so they've got a lot of disgruntled neighbors on the things that they tried to disrupt the years, and that's happened. So right now, where I'm at, as me singular, I'm saying to you that more speed bumps, committing, you know, I thought of some easy ways that you could remedy, maybe when they do the easement, they have a easement going out on Monroe Street, you can come in off of Monroe Street, but when you come out of Monroe Street, you're only going to let it turn right.
That's a great idea.
And then they're going to have you come out of that Nantucket, and if I was the person on Nantucket, familiar with Nantucket, I would never make a right to go to the traffic light, I would go left. So yeah, you could put a sign in there saying you can't go left, but people aren't going to listen to that, because if it was me, I won't tell you, I work for doing the work, I know how the criminal law works, and I myself would just cross over from the top as well, and turn around and go the other way, and then I'd go right, I need to go quick. So I'm not a fan of those results, those things, I try to think of things that could resolve it. What I'm a fan of is, I want the road closed, thank you for your time.
Thanks Cheryl. If I could maybe just address a couple things that you brought up Cheryl, that Lucas County, that road, that's the city of Toledo, and I remember, in fact, I have family members that still live back in the neighborhood, and it was a dead end. How do I say this without like not sounding really ridiculous, but there have been other projects within the city of Toledo that is a township, we've totally not liked. I agree, I live on Shamley Green, by the way, so I'm right on the corner, so I can relate to exactly what you get, what we're dealing with there. I wish we had a better relationship with the city of Toledo, quite frankly, because it'd have been really nice for them to reach out to us long before they've already approved some zoning out there, that's a city of Toledo issue. So, I love the idea of shutting this thing off, Rob and we talked a little bit about that, can we legally do it? That's what we're looking into right now. And Rob, if, I plan on being there tomorrow, Rob, our head of road construction, has asked Sheets to help alleviate the inflow and outflow on Nantucket, because I'm just as concerned as you are. They could say no, I mean, we're going to try, Rob's going to do his best to try to talk them about allowing it for it to happen, allowing them to do what they call is a pork chop, and basically, no left turn. You're right, can they go around the corner and go drive through Taco Bell? You know what, then the owner of the complex may have to put speed bumps, or we may have to do, we may have to do some more enforcement there to not allow left turns. I have an office in Mommy that has a pork chop, that you can't take a left, and I don't, you know, I hope people follow the rules, but you're going to get in trouble if you get caught, right? So, I, we looked at the pay, Rob, in fact, if you want to come up and try to maybe give, help, by the way, I don't want it to steal, and anybody else has anything to offer, other than what Cheryl's had to offer, I'm all ears, but.
I would like to take a moment just to importantly, that you're all talking about tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow afternoon, 2:00.
That's being canceled.
Oh, I didn't see that.
I'm trying to let you know, because we have a member Dana, who is a part of the planning commission community.
Okay.
And she did call me, and she let the people who went to the Sanger meeting, because she had their numbers, so she had to give, also, we got to get the word out, but it was canceled because Sheets had a water reservoir, there was a plan for runoff, and they can't do that, so they want to wait until December 4th
Okay.
For the next monthly meeting to be able to address that, they're going to redo some structural things to make that happen.
Great, well, thank you for it, it saved us a bunch of time. Cheryl, is Cheryl here? Did you get a copy of that email, because you were there by Thursday?
Yeah, no, this is for Zire.
Okay, let's, we're going to, we're going to need to confirm that, I'm glad you brought that up, thank you. Huh? Yeah, please do, okay, yeah, and then maybe we could put that on our website, alerting any other members of the neighborhood and/or interests in the township for it.
So, if you don't know me, I'm Rob Nash, Younger Road Superintendent, I'm probably knowledgeable about the situation as far as the road structures and the engineering itself, so I just want to give you a little insight, some comments that you were making, all the histories of, true stuff, 1970s when the road was actually built, 68, they started going to 90. And when they do that, there's, at the end of that plaque, there's a bumper, they call it bumper zone, central bumper zone, and that prevents anybody else from coming up to that zone, but once that bumper zone has been breached and development goes on, I think it was Red Gate, Platte 2, or they call it. That becomes that on public easement, on public right-of-way, and then roads dedicated. Unfortunately, it is a city, so the person 1,100 feet off of Monroe Street is within the city's limits, and as board members, as township officials, we have very little impact on what we can do for the city of Toledo, as that go up, voice our opinions, ask them, request them to do something. There are some mitigating things we can do, the pork chop we're referring to is actually, and they're parked on, it's a large curb, about inches tall, and it kind of just looks like a pork chop, that's why they kind of designated them, and it does designate to a right-hand turn. With that, if you've been around Central Avenue over by, like TSC, they have some in that area there too, you'll see people will get around somehow, but anytime you try to channel pedestrians or individuals, it has unintended consequences. For a pork chop, or making a right turn only out of there, the unintended consequences are going to be, like we said, they're going to go up to that first entrance, they're going to make a left, they're going to go down to that south entrance next to Hobby Lobby, or the U-turn store there, and they're going to exit and go out. Now, there's 475 plus parcels in the township, south of the border right there. All those individuals, residents who live in that, in that area, now there's a small group of you here, there may be 2,000 of them that would want to go to Sheets, and then come back home and not have to go down Whiteford, not have to go all the way to Towneage. So unintended consequences, now, you're pushing them to make, and make a U-turn, you're pushing them into pedestrian traffic, you're pushing them over to Sedalia or Vineyard. Now, residents, since it's Sedalia and Vineyard have a problem. The reason why Shamley Green has speed bumps is because when, because of those unintended consequences. We put the speed bumps in on Nantucket, that pushed the traffic, Shamley Green to go around the speed bumps. So, by rights, we had to put the speed bumps there too. So anytime we try to channel our traffic, there's going to be some sort of unintended consequence. Additionally, those speed bumps do cause delay EMS. If they're in your front yard, and if you had one in your front yard, you'll know that there's additional noise that is created. We have to put signs up, that now you have to mull around, and they get hit, and people bang to those. The noises can be very cumbersome, from construction tools flying off your truck, to corvettes not being able to go over, and scraping, and sparking things up. There are some unintended consequences when we do these types of mitigation. We do have stop signs, no through truck signs, we've done our best to mitigate those risks on there other than closing that road completely. The only way I can foresee an avenue to be able to do that legally would be through some sort of vacationing of the road, and then closing it.
What's that word when you say vacation?
Vacation means basically, we take a parcel of that road, and we say that this road, there's, it's likely this particular road, you could do this.
Do they like grass in the water here?
Well, what happens is, the abutting parcels own, become half owners, so we split it, and parcel go left, parcel go right, or the abutting parcels have opportunities to own that vacated parcel. Now, township would have to request that citizens' composition for that, but there's certain requirements for that and stipulations. Nantucket is probably very unhygienic, but it could be reviewed by prosecutor's office, if it is even feasible, it's ORC 55340.
So when is, and I hear you, and I hear that you're trying to let us know that it's, actually, what I'm hearing, if I can be honest, and not because you said, well, that's not what I'm trying to be, I just, I just want to find first, it really sounds like you're running with the wrong shirt.
No, what we can do is, what our plan is to do, is to go to Toledo, to the commissioner's office. Now, this is, what this first meeting was there, this meeting that was planned yesterday, is really a preliminary just to get the zoning requirements set in place, so all plans and finalization of everything is not done yet.
Well, I mean, I hear you, yeah.
So what we can do, if we can go to the city's will, and we can ask and request these mitigations, we can request additional, we can request the pork chop, we can request this, that installation, speed bumps along the roads. See, we have the apartment complexes and other businesses prior to that, so you've got to take into consideration, you know, 300 to 500 people in those apartment complexes, say they want to go to the Sheets and get a burger, whatever. Those 500 foreign people now can't come home, they got to cut through somewhere, and they're going to, it's not a matter of if, if it happens, it's, it will happen, and then now we have that unintended consequences of dealing with those business owners, pedestrians going through the parking lots, and then the roads next to that. So, what we want to do is try and reduce as much as possible, the potential of the casual driver going by deciding to go south. So the majority of your people, unless they're residents behind you in your community, are traveling down Monroe Street that are going to visit that store, they're not going to come off Savannah Avenue to go up the Antucket to go to Sheets.
Yes, they are, they are.
Well.
They are, that's probably, you know, I get it, I mean, you don't live there.
I don't live there.
I mean, no disrespect, we get them off Savannah, and we're getting them off there, and now we have a justifiable, so so you can hear, we have a justifiable issue, where we see it on paper, it's going to bring 1,500 more new traffic.
Well, that's the one thing that, one of the questions I will ask, is there, has there been a traffic intervention backside? As of now, I can't find one, do you have any?
They're going to tell you no, because they told us no last Thursday.
Well, they have to do it, if they have one, they will, we will ask them for one. Generally, when there's a signal, it's a requirement, it's not if, if they have to do, whether it's something that the city should require them to do.
What do you mean a signal?
There's a signal up the Monroe Street in Nantucket, as I mentioned, yeah, so you have additional signaling timing you have to consider, you have channeling of the traffic, how many cars you can put in to channel, there's a lot of other studies that have to be done prior to this. Like I said, this is a preliminary conversation, I think, to get to the zoning part. Not that it's not going to happen, I'm saying it's, it's kind of, it's still in the stages of the beginning of getting to the point where we have all the information. I think even the design that I have, the most recent design I have, does show everything, and I think that's going to be the final product.
We have hard enough time to get the hell out of this, now, with all the traffic coming.
Yeah, I couldn't.
From Savannah, to the special channels, district of Fields. We, the, right there where something is, all right, we can sit outside, and I can tell you how many cars go through and run that stop sign. We have kids on bicycles, kids that are disabled and out there. I'm surprised that nothing has happened yet, but you, you're right about the speed bumps, you sit and watch cars go over, leave the sparks. They think it's hilarious, but they've also run that stop sign, there's been no let out yet at all. We have neighbors in there, who are side, who are going around, going the opposite way on the streets, nothing's happening. You know, we have a lot of issues in that neighborhood.
Well, I guess it's going to take a little kid, because there's speed bumps 25, they don't go 25, it's going to wait till the kid gets killed or hurt on a bike, and it's serious, because our neighborhood has changed. And you're passionate about this, because I have no kids.
And, you know, the township, myself, I believe, want to do everything we can do.
The township allowed us to have it when the numbers were low, in 1970, the reason why Dunbar wasn't able to open it up was there wasn't hardly anybody in the neighborhood.
Well, Dunbar annexed it to the city of Toledo, I believe, at that same time.
I'm getting told different messages, so I won't, because I've been in Toledo, I've been in Lucas County, and I've been here. This is why we came here, because they said it's a township, if you want to do something with Nantucket, you have to go to the township, and then Lucas County approves it, Lucas County has the final say on the road, because it's their jurisdiction or something, I don't know. You guys would better understand that, but if we wanted information, any information I want about speed bumps, the stop signs, what they were put in or anything, I have to go to Savannah, if there's anything about closing the road, it's supposed to be Savannah. Toledo ends, at the end, at where the speed bump is coming into our street, it's no longer Toledo, so it's not a Toledo issue. We can survey the taxes, and we have the Savannah Township.
So here's what we can do, it's not a matter of if we can't do it, or we can't do it, here's what we can do. We can put in additional speed bumps, we can perform, we can request for Toledo to provide some additional litigation.
Yeah, we already have speed bumps, we have a lot of times, we've done everything.
Cheryl, let's get the tone a little softer.
It's not a matter of if I want to, or if I can't, again, this is what's law, what we can actually do. Like I said, your solution is blocking the road, right, is shutting it off at the town.
Well, because I, in my head, when I sit back and think of all the other options, they're not going to work.
Okay, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm going to tell you what the consequences of that. Okay, you're going to have delay in response from stations ready to hit EMS to anybody in that neighborhood.
Right.
You're going to have the people that still live in the area come up through Nantucket, and they're going to go down Red Gate, and they're going to push us to Sedalia, because what we do is you push the traffic.
All they're going to do is go down Whiteford and go, come in like they tell the other one who come in. Nantucket does not have to be there, when you think about it, the station sits on Whiteford, they come out, they go left, and then they'll go right, wherever they have to go.
Okay.
They'll come off Homerdale, they'll go down Red Gate, they'll come in, they can come in real simple. And if you put more speed bumps, that's maybe the beginning to down Nantucket, I would go down Nantucket if I was a fireman. I'd go down Whiteford to Homerdale to get there quicker.
Well, these are the requests we can ask for the city's will, what we can do is we can check with John Barrow, our prosecutor's office, he's their legal advisor, on road closure, that would require a lot of traffic study impacts as well. That would require fire chief, police, EMS, a lot of other individuals to agree that, hey, this is, this is safe, when you're having, you know, putting the residents at risk. Now, like I said, this, this is a, would be a long process, this would involve more than you all sitting here as the complainants, this would involve all the residents who don't necessarily live on it. So, I understand your plight, I am true to you, and, you know, this is, I don't look at it, I don't mean, I haven't seen it, I see it every day. I, I've worked that road for 29 years.
But what I'm hearing you say, and I appreciate what you're saying, no disrespect intended, but I hear about us continuing to make concessions on our $300,000 homes, for you to put speed bumps in there to let everybody know we have a traffic issue. It doesn't make any sense to me, because you continue to want to do what you want to do as a township, or as a city, and not think about the community, like you said, there's 450 people that live back there, and I don't think anybody's really thinking about it, because you're asking us to make concessions, and I really don't appreciate it, because we've done concessions, and it's not personal to you. I'm saying it to everybody, I'm not directly to you, because I think you'd have a hard job, I really do. But I'm hearing you wanting to go and talk about putting these things in, but you're not saying, well, go talk about possible, both of these. You'll go to the prosecutor's.
Sure, yeah, there's a lot, I mean, I could, you know, I know, I believe, I hear your frustration, and you, whatever I might tell you, you're probably not going to, you're not going to like, I don't think, whatever we say to you tonight.
I think I could, but I'm, I'm hearing one side of something.
No, if I could just keep speaking, if you don't mind, this take, what, what, believe me, I'd like to have a dead end there too, okay? I'm on Shamley Green, I'm not disrepute you one bit. You have, this is years and years in the process, this isn't like tomorrow, we're going to wake up, and we're going to vacate this little lot, and we got to get with the city of Toledo, there are a lot of moving. of Toledo, there are a lot of moving parts here, I mean, we haven't vacated a lot in Savannah Township, and I can't remember, it's, it's, it's a big process, I mean, it takes layers and layers of approval. So I guess the question that we would ask, and, you know, do we send a survey out to the neighborhood? I mean, although you may not like the more speed bumps, I mean, I don't know what, because I don't know what we can do initially, again, and I don't, please don't take offense to this, I'm dealing with the city of Toledo, city of Toledo, that's, the city of Toledo police are responsible for Sheets, I know that sounds really stupid, doesn't it? Because if you go to Target, it's Savannah Township, so there is a bastard little piece of property there, and those apartments, even if you go to Hobby Lobby, that's Savannah Township, it makes absolutely no sense, okay? But the city of Toledo is who decides on if a Sheetz store goes there, whatever little political juice I had, and whatever little calls, people don't listen to me very well though over there, they're the alpha, and they, if they want it, how do we best set up Nantucket? I don't know what that is, how do we best set it up to protect our little neighborhood? And that, believe me, I would love to have a, I'd love to have a road dead, but that's not gonna happen tomorrow, and we have to even, I mean, it's, Rob and I have been talking about this for a couple of weeks, when do we all find out about this? I found out the same time you guys found out about this, so that tells you the type of respect the city of Toledo has for us township trustees, okay? Which really pisses me off, but bottom line is, I can't, I'd love to say, hey, city councilmen, don't approve this, it's the city of Toledo, and as frustrated as I am, as you are, I'm pissed about it, I don't know what I can do, so how do we best circumvent, how do we best make the residents of the township ease in what that might be?
Well, I'm hearing, I'm I'm hearing you, and I understand what you're saying, but I guess maybe I'm not getting you, because Toledo can do whatever the hell they want to do, because it's, that's good, and it's already been zoned for commercial, I'm okay with that, I'm not okay with the gas station, because of how big it is, how huge it is, I'm not okay with the twenty-four hour, I'm not okay with there's, with the apartments having to deal with light all the time, they have children that live there too, and they have children that come down Nantucket right in their legs, I mean, I get that, so I'm I'm a neighbor, and I understand everybody's needs, but the point I'm struggling with is that we're complaining and blaming Toledo, we have a township, we have a road, it stops and starts at the speed bump, even though it's Nantucket outside of Hood Road, we can take care of our own neighborhood, the next one I'm thinking.
Okay, so Cheryl, great, great point, if you were to, the, obviously, the optimum is if all the, all the stars lined up, we shut the road off, what would you want us to do for Nantucket, and how can we prevent traffic from going up and down there?
Shut it down?
No, I'm talking about shutting, vacating the front end with the city of Toledo border. How, if we can't, that's gonna take years, okay? Being very sincere, I'm not trying to be cute, what?
It would take years, oh, why would it?
Oh, there's so, well, Rob, what are you, you're talking years, probably.
Yeah, yeah.
We've been working on a light, I can tell you an example, I've been working on a light for ten years on Monroe Street in Lasky, you ever tried to pull out of Lasky on Monroe Street? It's been fifteen years, Rob, you and I have been working on this, it's, I've been working on that, a light there for fifteen years.
Well, see, I don't understand, because if people don't wanna go out, then they should go to Old Street.
There's a lot of people, a lot of people come from Lasky, you know.
Sure, I know for you, and I understand your concern.
Because that's what I do.
It's just, it's, it's, yeah.
I will, I will send this to prosecutor's office, I'm gonna give you an attorney before you leave, and I'll break.
I'm just a vocal person, I mean.
No, I love it, I love it, no, it's great.
But I'm hoping I'm saying whatever.
We need a voice, I'm with you, I, believe me, I'm.
If I never see the face, this is my lifetime, I can't retire, it may work, I guess it's my last life, and I have a lot of time to do it that I always planned, but that was always worked.
The Tordi family I know in Homardale has been, you know, Julie Gross has been, you know, I've, I've lived there, I'm on, I'm on Shamley Green, I, I believe you, I'm with you, I hate it, it drives me crazy, I can't stand it.
Well, I'm.
I wish I could have voted on Sheets on the corner there, but it's not in the township, I can't.
But you can restrict what they do, I mean, they said, they don't have to make this yet.
City Council can.
Yeah.
Savannah, or city of Toledo.
Yeah, that's why we're gonna go to the meeting and try our best, we also have to notify you because you're our township.
Well, and our intention was to show up tomorrow, and I'm glad you brought that up, I was gonna have Rob, we don't even know if Sheets is gonna accept our proposal of a pork chop, like the left-hand turn, I mean, they, they, they may not even accept that, they could tell, the city of Toledo and Sheets could say, no, we're gonna do a left turn, we're fighting for a left turn, a no-left turn, that's, we don't even have that, that's not an agreement with Sheets yet, they might say, forget you guys, Savannah Township, we'll go left. The current design doesn't have that, so we're trying to work politically behind the scenes, calling Sheets directly, working with them to try to figure out, hey, be respectful of our neighbors, of Savannah Township neighbors.
But Neil, the issue is here is that four hundred and fifty people are dating George for one business, that can still be a business in Toledo, and supports Toledo, and just go someplace else.
I'm not disagreeing with you one bit.
So I'm not hearing anything about that.
Well, how, if you can tell me how we can do that, then how can I do that? And I'm not trying.
I'm not, because like I said, I'm in retirement, I just came in here, so.
But I'm not.
Come on, be with me and give me some education, burger, I'll be happy to do that, so I could give them a piece of what they need to do, because I don't, you know, I don't know everything, I'm learning as I'm doing.
Believe me, if there's something I could do about, I mean, if there was truly something I personally, Neil Mahoney could do, I've got two other elected officials, I would have to vote on anything if it was, if this was in the township, this would be like, okay, I get this one, this is Nantucket, I mean, we're kind of in a box, truly, we, I personally am.
For me, a little meeting, and they tell them that they're not gonna impact our neighborhood expulsion.
Well, I'll give you, let me give you just one last example, and if anybody else has anything to offer, but do you remember, you guys wouldn't remember, but up in North, North Savannah area, okay, the Savannah Township, they're looking at putting these big windmills in Rigan Township, they're putting thousands of them up there, John and I went up to Blissfield, and we like, hey, we live in Savannah Township, hey, we don't want those windmills, what they tell us? Go, you know, you know, you're nuts, we do whatever we want, it's Blissfield, Monroe County, what I'm trying to say, it's, we're kind of in a similar situation, we softly can help do whatever we can to help alleviate, how we can do it as best we can, but the bottom line is, and I know you guys don't wanna hear this, the bottom line is, it's the city of Toledo's the alpha on this one, they're the ones that got the control.
I get that.
As a township, we are very limited in what we can do, and I know you don't wanna hear other people's problems, but out on the west side of, we've been trying to get the speed limit on a street changed from fifty-five, the, the street has two parks, a church, two schools, and it's a fifty-five mile an hour, and we don't even have the power to change that, so we are very limited in what we can do as a township, and everything we do is spelled out in the Ohio Revised Code, and like Neil said, our best chance of getting anything done is to work cooperatively with the city of Toledo, and with Sheets, and to get them to to find something that's going to best suit everybody involved, but, you know, and again, that that might be a reason to get rid of Savannah Township, certainly that doesn't look like a township to what most people think of when they think rural townships, you know, you, you've got a target within a couple hundred yards of your house and and things, and, you know, but yet, those are the rules that we're trying to play by, is, you know, what the Ohio Revised Code, which was developed, you know, decades ago, if, you know, and so we are very challenged, we wanna work with everybody here and make that a safe community, but we are really hampered in what we are able to do.
Well, it seems like the wrong people have the power, and I'll just say that, and nobody talks, so, you know, I guess would be, how much money do I have to put out of my pocket in order to make a change? Who do I have to pay?
I think those are big dollars, and big, and, you know.
What?
All right, anything else that, anything other than what Cheryl had offered tonight, you guys? And thank you for all you coming tonight, Cheryl, thank you very much. Well said, by the way. Okay, any questions on the board?
When, when is the city of Toledo the final approval expecting, and do we have a timeframe for that?
I had said that they wanted to put a reservoir on the thing, and it wasn't set, it wasn't stated, it wasn't in the plans, they didn't show it, it's at the library, so it came up, and it's not allowed, it's not up to code, so they have to go redesign, so they asked for it to be delayed thirty days till next, the beginning of next month, which is like way back.
Okay, and then it gets approved at the city of Toledo, and then is it, it's already been through the planning commission?
Well, from what I understand, yes, they've approved, they've, they've approved it, now it's just a plan review, okay? So it's kinda like with our plan review, you know?
Yeah, it goes back to there.
Well, the, the meeting that would have been tomorrow, but it's now December fourth, is the city of Toledo Plan Commission, and then after that, it goes to the zoning and planning committee, city council, and then I believe after that, full city council goes on.
Okay, so we're looking at like probably middle of January?
Um, roughly, I mean, if you push back now, even later.
Okay, okay, well, again, I, I'm, thank you for coming, I'm just as frustrated as you guys are, because I grew up.
You know, like, you know, this is for sure, that.
No, I mean, well, great question, no, but the planning commission does a preliminary approval of it, and they've, looks as though they've approved the project.
The work that they're doing right now with the gas line, that.
I think so, to be honest with you, I think there's, yeah, I don't know that for a fact, but anyways, again, I wish I could have had better stuff to tell you guys what I'm dealing with here, or we're dealing with, but, well, we're gonna fight as best we can with, with, with little bullets we have in our pocket, but we'll do our best, so, that's all, that's what I can guarantee you.
So what would be the other option, just to throw that out there as options, so I thought about, like, a gated community, where people, so people, sure, the fire can come through the way they need to.
Hey, nothing's off the table here, I, you know.
I'm just saying, but that's not going on the road.
It's a public road, though, so, yeah, yeah, but it, it, yeah, well, yeah.
I mean, take other groups.
I don't know, one, I guess one last thing, and we can adjourn this, but does, do you any, do you guys ever drive up Central Avenue, go to Monroe Street, and you guys go down Woodmont, that little street, you know, going into Christ the King, you know, that little, that's a pain in the rear to go down, but people used to fly down that all the time, the traffic studies that I've heard from, from a city council member, what's his name? But they, again, I know you don't want more speed bumps, but they put more in there, and it has cut down traffic, I don't know what bullets we have, but maybe.
They cut down traffic down that street, but you go, this is why you have to, you know, that neighborhood, as soon as you get the legal side, you just go left, and you walk.
That's Rob's argument, that's what Rob's saying would happen in Nantucket, the overflow, yeah.
But they'll go through, I mean, so it's like, you have to cut it off, it's like, hey, I'm not looking at, and again, I know we gotta go, it's looking at, probably like looking at kids, looking at the plan of the street, we don't have sign lines, so you're letting, they don't even go twenty-five on the street, the police come out there, and we're waiting on that, so hopefully we'll have more data, and we'll be telling the meeting about what the speed, how many speeding tickets do they put out there when they go? They haven't been out there in a while because they were low on staff, but now they're fully staffed, so they've been out there giving speeding tickets and doing what they need to do, and running stop signs and stuff like that.
Right.
But it's not okay, but you gotta have a way in and a way out, but two of them are free pass from one, one street to the other without any communities making turns, which is not good.
Again, thanks, everybody, tonight, appreciate it, I'd like to adjourn at five forty-three.
Second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Is your gentleman?
Yes.
Ms. Mahoney?
Yes.
I just, I just.
I'm very interested.